About ten minutes, but I went through it pretty fast.
We're here.
Okay.
I didn't write anything.
We're gonna call the meeting of the Bath Township Planning Commission to order. It's Tuesday, August the 12th, and it's a couple of minutes after six. So, anybody read the agenda and want to approve it?
So moved.
Second, the board. Thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Any conflict of interest? Hearing none. There's no public here. Minutes of the July twenty-second meeting. Has everybody read them? Any comments, corrections, additions, deletions?
I move your approval.
Support.
Motion and support for an approval of the agenda meetings, or the meetings of the minute. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we'll move on. Wow, we're making rapid progress here. Any communications from Miles?
Yeah, we do have one this time. Woodhull Township is engaging in some master planning. And they're giving us a heads up. It looks like they are going with the consulting from Rowe. That was one of the firms we looked at too, they're out of the plan.
Yes, it is, yeah.
So, exciting for them, and I'm sure they'll provide additional communications as they're having input sessions and whatnot. So it seems, just to keep track, since we're on the subject, we're obviously doing some extra planning. East Lansing is, and so is Woodhull, so all aligned with each other right now, which is kinda interesting.
It is, yeah, very interesting. Okay.
Oh, okay.
Anything else?
The second one, we had another communication about storage and just the land use of storage itself, speaking to, you know, how the writer of this letter feels that the market might be over saturated with it. They put together all this, which I wouldn't go into reading, but it's in the packet.
Okay.
Please check it out.
So wasn't that presented last meeting?
That was a different.
That was a different.
Different. I mean, I know it wasn't that comprehensive, but, different person?
Same person.
Oh, same person.
Same person. Oh, is it?
Same person, same issue, different information.
Much more comprehensive.
Yeah, seemed to be a lot more data. I don't know how accurate it was, but we'll see.
Does that person own a storage facility?
I don't know.
Just wondering.
Officially or unofficially.
That all you got, Miles?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, let's move on to capital improvement.
Yeah, so within the packet are, is one, the scoring sheet itself that we've used in the past. Two, we have included the information that has been submitted to us in the past. It is worth noting, they don't think we had our cover page for the parking lot project, but the plans for the project are there. I believe when this was, because I couldn't find anything on it, but I believe when this was submitted, I don't even know if they got to the point, because they get so late in the CFP cycle last year, I don't even know if they had a quote for us at that time. Not that the quote asphalt prices are so, actually, probably cheaper this year than if it even was quoted last year, because asphalt prices, if you don't know, are quite down.
Yeah, they've gone down.
Did we not talk about just using last year's scores?
I was gonna bring that up.
Okay.
That was something that was talked about. I, this meeting was noticed to score at this meeting, so we still have to bring it to you guys. And if this body feels like that is the route to go, obviously that would save time, and that is an option.
Yeah, we talked about this extensively at the last meeting, and we, in fact, I think we talked about it in a meeting before that, a year before that.
All of these have been reviewed multiple times by this body.
But last year, we had revised the form and the process a little bit, so I feel that.
Some.
Yeah, so, yep, last year, we introduced the categories to help better communicate to the board of trustees, kind of what. But yeah, I mean, those were scored last year for the same purpose.
Right. I would feel comfortable using the same scores as last year.
Well, I really think that we need to take a look at the erosion that's going on in the pouring place from the water running off the parking lot. I noticed a number of us.
I guess you have to do it.
One thing that we talked about that is probably worth reiterating is, in this, I don't think this mechanism has been used by the planning commission before, but I just think it's like an interesting idea if the planning commission is open. Obviously, the scores are what they are, and the floor to read into those scores, what they will, following this, all this information gets put into a report. That report gets brought before you guys to look over and add comments, editor, you know, make edits. That would be a place where this body could say, like, hey, this is a statement that we would like included in this report. That can speak in addition to the scores.
Good point, Kevs.
Because there really needs to be some action taken to mitigate that water that's running off into the new pouring place. I don't necessarily think that paving the parking lot is necessary to do that. Seems to me as though if you take a look at those drawings that Kevs did for us a couple of years ago, that would resolve the, most of the water issue, if not all, of the water that's going on to the pouring place. I know that was put in there, they said with ARPA money, because they had to do it, or they were gonna lose the ARPA money, but there, there's no use in spending that kind of money and then letting it deteriorate, because water's running off into it, in my opinion.
Here's what the fix is. So I was there yesterday to check it out.
Thank you.
Based on the chair's recommendation.
Thank you.
Miles, if you could go back to the drawing or a visual.
Yeah, I was on track, because I think this one actually has the pouring place, I think this is nineteen, so it's just wood chips. This is what I think it looks like, and you can kinda see.
Yeah, so all you need to do is, there's a curb here and here. There's no curb, and it goes to like a little memorial, like people, like bricks with the people's names on it. All you need to do is bridge that curb at the same height of the existing curb on both sides of that little walkway. Put a bush up.
Over here or something?
Yeah, put the entrance over there. It's, it'll pour all the water to the north, or, yeah, to the north. And then maybe you can do a little retention pond over in that direction.
Well, it kinda sounds like you and the chair are saying the same thing, and like, you don't need to spend, I don't know, whatever dollar amount this parking lot would cost.
Yeah.
You could do an interim fix in the meantime.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think interim, I don't know how much that would cost. It can't be more than a few thousand dollars to put in a curb there.
Yeah.
I, easy fix, it would clean up all that sediment that's on that pouring place.
Yeah, and just whatever concrete costs it costs for a new walkway around the north side.
Well, there's already concrete there.
Oh, is there? Okay. I guess there is, yeah. Yeah, it's just like get rid of that.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I love that. And that's what I'm saying, like, the deck could all be communicated via the report.
Right.
Like, why is this not being looked at? This is not smart.
Well, I mean, you know, I'm a psychologist, so who knows? I'm not a traffic engineer or anything like that, but.
You could get into the psychology of it.
Well, yeah, I mean, people made, presumably, families made donations to support offset the cost of the pouring place, right?
Sure.
All those bricks that are honoring them are filled with silt from the parking lot. So that's bad form on our part.
Not a good way to honor them, right?
And it's a park that represents the contributions of a family, a long-term family in the township. We could spend a couple of grand to fix what should have been fixed in the first place. I mean, I'll reiterate what John says, like, why did we put the pouring place without fixing that? Or repour the pouring place without fixing that?
Yeah, because I remember there was quite a discussion about that, and we said, before you do the pouring place, you really should mitigate the water issue.
When I know, just to speak to DPW, as, and the director of DPW at the time, obviously brought a lot of this up, and I think what he agree with everything that's being said, and when the pouring place was put in, significant amount of tiling was done under it before it was installed. The, he, and he agrees, this is, you know, Ben Zee agrees that if you gum me up, to not use a technical term, the pouring place with silt, it kinda, and then makes its way into that tiling, kinda defeats the whole purpose.
Yep.
So, it sounds like everyone's in agreement, though. I don't. I guess I'm looking to you, Chair, how do you wanna go about the issue in front of us tonight?
Well, I think that that should be moved up to the top priority myself, to not the whole thing of the parking lot, but at least to mitigate the drainage issue. And.
Does that need to be a part of the comprehensive plan, or can that be just a communication? Separate from the comprehensive, or the capital?
CIP report.
CIP?
I mean, this is.
However, you guys, you guys literally can do it however you wanna do it.
Well, there's two things, right? So we can adjust our scores for this particular project to elevate the scores to, or we can add the note in the report that Miles was talking about.
Or you can add a note and do a separate memo, and ask us to draft a memo, which we can bring back for you guys to review.
Yeah. So though, the, I think the question B is, if they mitigate the drainage with, you know, a suggested quick fix, would that alter our scores on the parking lot plan?
Yeah, would, would it, would it lower our score?
Well, alter, I don't know, I mean.
Well, no, that's, that's your point, because technically, what you're being asked to score by DPW isn't the curb fix, you're being asked to score the parking lot.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
And if there is some alternative fix that you guys have identified, it might be more advantageous to call that out and not just give a high score to the parking lot.
Yeah, it might change the, like, the department priority number, and perhaps even the likelihood of funding value.
Well, it definitely, I mean, but that's, but the problem is, like, the, I agree, and I don't know why, again, maybe this easier fix wasn't gonna be looked at, maybe because they just thought the money could be there, and the long-term fix was just to pave it, and then it's like the best in both worlds, but obviously, the money wasn't there, so it never came to fruition. But if you, I think what's being presented as an issue is if you score the parking lot project, you can score that however you want. The, the curb project isn't on, it's not on the agenda to be scored, it has not been brought forward as a project.
Well, it hasn't been separated into two different issues, and what we're trying to do is separate it into two separate issues.
Which I think you can do, and I just don't know if that can be scored as this process is laid out.
My, my view is that the parking lot does address that issue, right? Because there's a retention pond, and then there's, I think, includes building that curb, right?
Right, if you do the whole thing, but if you just pave the parking lot, you don't do the other work, you're just putting more water on the boarding place.
So it's, it's the Cadillac version of the fix, right? And the question is, do we want the Chevette version of the fix?
We want the Honda version.
The Honda, yeah.
Lot of miles out of us.
I, I kinda looked at it this way. I said, well, you know, the carpet's kind of ratty looking, and it's getting musty because the roof leaks, so we're gonna replace the carpet, but we're not gonna fix the leaky roof.
Yeah.
Is most of this water, how much of this water is coming off the road?
None.
No, it's all.
It's all off the parking lot.
So the grade of the parking lot slopes from basically all directions to that one spot where it enters into the park.
Well, and we.
Oh, yeah, you can see all the arrows there, right? Point right to that entrance.
Right, you can.
The entrance right here.
Yeah. You can see the water actually spundled in that direction. And part of the problem is that the parking lot was, they used limestone instead of crushed stone in the parking lot. So we all know limestone dissolves. It's a.
That's what that silt material is, it's the erosion of the limestone.
Of the limestone, that's correct.
So actually, with, this is actually helpful, right? So you can see that the slope on either side of that curb cut, whatever we're gonna call it, actually both go in that direction, right? And so if we put that curb back in, the question is, where will the water go?
It'll pool there. They will have, they'll have to do some kind of drain and tile above all this, and tie it into our current engineered drainage.
So on the opposite side of that pouring place is a storm sewer drain. But I know that there's a, some sort of gas line that's underneath that. I don't know if that's something that.
Yeah, I don't know the elevation of that gas line versus the storm drain that runs over the lake either.
But again, I mean, they put a lot of tiling in here. I know there, I wanna say there's a drain over here somewhere, so.
Yes, there is.
They just need to install a drain. It can even be, I think that term is a honeycomb drain, would work well, and that can stay shallow to the surface.
But if you're gonna put a curb and gutter on that thing, you don't want a honeycomb.
Well, I don't know if they're gonna do a curb and gutter. If they do a curb and gutter, then they could just do, yeah, then that would work too. But if they do like a larger, not basin, but like a larger concrete footing, and do the honeycomb, kinda like what we did for the fix on Webster Road, where the water was pooling by the school, it's a honeycomb there, it wasn't established properly, we put the curb around the back of it, and then put a larger concrete area for water pool.
What is it? You're talking about Beehive, that you're talking, flat?
No, I'm talking about Beehive. That's why, if you go on Webster Road to the school, that's been performing well there, and it's kinda similar. Similar situation here. So the curb actually wouldn't be flush, and the curb would actually bend in.
Okay.
So there's no sidewalk behind this, along this?
No, there's shrubs.
Yeah, the only portion of the sidewalks right here, and that's where all the water's pointing to. But that's what I'm saying, you could bring the curb. There's lots, I'm not a hydrologist or an engineer, there's a lot of options, all of which are cheaper than doing a whole parking lot.
Could bring in some more fines. Go back to the parking lot itself.
Bring in some more fines, a little bit of middle up, just a hair, because it looks like the changes in elevation are less than a half foot there. It's like.
Yeah, you could regrade the slope too, and get the water sheet flow.
Go both ways.
Again, cheaper than a parking lot, and I, the good thing about everything that everyone's talking about right now is, it doesn't preclude a parking lot at a later date.
That's right.
Right? You can always come back in asphalt this thing later.
That's correct, yeah.
But see, to me, that looks like curb and gutter along the north side of the parking lot.
I'll have to go out and say, check it out.
There's no gutter.
There's no gutter.
That's proposed, not necessarily what's there now.
Oh, that's a proposal. Yeah, oh, I see that, okay.
Yeah, I don't know why they did it that way, because it funnels that water right onto the pouring place.
I wonder if this is the current conditions, though, or how the grade they were gonna establish. That could be too.
That should be, that should be the grades they're gonna establish. This whole thing, I think, because that underdrain stuff is, is proposed too, right?
Yeah. Because with the current elevation here, they have the current elevation, so it's, it's more sheet flow, but still going towards the pouring place. So it's, well, that's kinda rounded, so. But is sheet flow going to?
Should go to the north.
No, it looks like the sheet flow is going.
Kind of west.
West.
Well, when I, when I was there, my eyeball expertise as a psychologist, it looked like it would hit the curb and, and pool going north.
Okay.
I, and then hit the grass. Now, I don't know if it would cut over the sidewalk and then cut back into the pouring place, but it looked like the pouring place was poured a little bit higher than the sidewalks.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. Either way, I think your point still stands.
So you have to make, to make this drainage, you're gonna have to replace a whole curb and gutter then.
So what do we wanna do with the scoring piece of it? How should staff score?
My preference would be that we separate it into two projects, which I realize is not the way the thing is designed, but I think that's the most practical thing to do. It's up to the rest of the commissioners.
We've got it, in the packet is a project, but if we use Miles's opportunity to put a note in there that, because if we put it in and they say no to it, it's gonna sit there for another year to come in front of us. But if we put a note in that this could be broken out and taken care of for less money, we still leave our score that we think it needs to be done, but we're giving them the opportunity to take a left turn and fix it for less money today.
What we could, what staff could draft for you guys and bring back next time is basically saying, like, hey, the scores are, the planning commission opted to reinstitute the scores from the last cycle due to no new projects being introduced. However, with new information coming to light, the planning commission felt like the projects presented didn't appropriately address that this issue of this one project in particular, the planning commission prescribed this series of fixes. We would, the planning commission feels strongly, I'll try to word it strongly for you guys, the planning commission feels strongly that this above all else needs to be reviewed by the board, and is, to many degrees, more important than the projects that were scored by the planning commission. Something along those lines.
Can you go back to the existing picture? What's there now?
With this one?
No, the one that actually shows the, yeah, that one.
This one's not exactly existing grid, it's, it's mortared, but you get what I'm saying.
This, this strip right through here, is that existing curb and gutter right there?
That's curb, no gutter.
Just curb, no gutter.
With wood chips and shrubs in it.
Okay, but you said, you said it flows off to the north up here?
That was my sense that it, the water would flow. I mean, right now, I think Miles is right, it would pool.
It was in there, Tom.
But if the elevation was built up a little bit with more gravel material, it'd take it worse. Yeah.
Well, the thing is, if the design of the parking lot is here, it can flow this way, this little place right here, then for us to fix this this way and, and just close this off, we gotta replace this whole curb and gutter some day in the future anyway. But it's gonna go the other way.
Well, so, I think, the question I have is, in the architectural drawing, right, it shows the, the grade.
Yeah, it shows all the grades on it.
Based on what they want the grade to be, right? It's part of the plan. But I think in reality, right now, that's not, the grade does flow to the north a little bit. I mean, it flow, it definitely flows from.
It's hard, it's hard Jason, because these ISO lines are only at the five-foot level, and here, a couple of feet are gonna matter. So this part's elevated, right? So this is the highest part of the parking lot, and it definitely goes this way. Once the water flows and hits here, my sense is that.
Comes that way.
It would hit the curb and then go that way, not this way. But I didn't bring a laser revolver, all that kinda stuff, so.
I'll go, I'll get the contours on it. Not that one, the one that, it shows the proposed contours.
Oh.
It looks like it's about to rain. We could just head right over there and see what happens.
We can.
That is on, there's only one way to see how water flows, that's the best way.
Yeah, that's the best way.
Right now, when you get the designs, they have all this water here flow to here, and this is a high point up here, it's gonna flow back this way. So right now, this goes that way, we gotta replace this whole thing in here to make it flow that way. Right?
All right. I don't disagree with any of that, I guess, I'm trying to.
Get me the water flow till.
It's pretty hard.
What are we doing with the issue before us tonight?
My advice would be, don't, I don't think it would be valuable for us to spend too much time on it, just based on my feelings from where the board is in terms of the budget process and the strategic planning process. That's, that's, I can only speak for myself, but that's sort of the sense I have.
So are you in the camp of going with the same scores as last year?
I am, yes, just in the interest of our time and effort.
Just for my clarity, are you also in the camp of us coming up with some memo to reiterate that short-term fixes?
That would probably be more well-received, to think of it as a separate issue.
It seems like the, the timing of this price is key to what we're gonna do. If they're gonna pay this, this thing next year, then we might be able to live with it the way it is now, but if they're not gonna pay it for two years, we gotta do this quick fix. Which wouldn't be much, just plug off that one place and let the water go to the north like Jason's talking about.
Okay, so it sounds like you, everyone, I think including me at this point, is in, not that I give a vote, which I don't, but is in agreement, so. Does somebody wanna put that into a motion?
Sure. Move to accept last year's scoring of the capital improvement plan processes as this year's reiteration of the scores, with the addition of a note addressing the parking lot plan. And the note should identify that the plan addresses two issues. We feel that one issue of the drainage to the pouring place needs to be addressed post haste. And I should not be left unattended to, I don't, something along those lines.
Yep.
I'll second that.
We just do a voice vote? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none? Let's move on.
I think that's good, because that leaves us to, Ben, to decide how you're gonna do a short-term fix. He can look at it and say, well, for short-term fix, that's all I gotta do.
Well, I think it should be fixed, though, Ray, not just a Band-Aid, don't you?
Well, when you put a new parking lot in, it's gonna get ripped out anyway.
Some of the curb might.
Yes, some might.
Some of it might stay, just like we did out here.
The stuff that's north of what, where the problem is, is gonna get replaced, because it's flowing the wrong way.
Well, that's probably true, yeah.
Right now, it flows to the north, it's gotta flow south.
That's a, that's a, is a future problem. I, you gotta do some in the meantime, I think we're on agreement there.
Yeah, other, the concern I've got is that pouring place is not gonna take all that water for much longer.
All right, Chair, I'm trying to get to the survey here so I can get some good notes. Are you cool with me moving to that item?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir, I certainly am.
Let's see here. All right, so we met with, we took in you guys' feedback last time. The interns helped me do a lot of the heavy lifting for just making all the edits, which obviously there were many. Then we, and the consultants largely agreed too, and they just wanted to reiterate, like, it's, it's, it is difficult for them because they were working with the community just days before us, and they gave them like really short introductions to the section. They were like, no, build these out, too short. And then we, and then we came, and we were like, no, these are too long, way shorter, so they're just, they're doing their best. But they took a lot of the feedback in good faith and largely agreed with a lot of the feedback. They did appreciate, they said they've never worked with a planning commission that's actively helping them like trim things down, which is in the best practice of surveys. Typically, planning commissions are like, no, build this out. So they appreciated that. They put together a memo, and they've got a little scan me thing, which I will blow up if I can figure out, yep, there it is. You guys can take a look at this on your, that's as much as, let me zoom in, I guess. Take a look at this on your phone real quick. And I'm gonna try to open a link to this. This will give you a preview. I'll go back to it. This will give you a preview. If you wanna see it on your phone, it's there. I'll preview it too, so we can go through it. But it's, it is good to look at the survey and how it'll actually look. And that was something, after we did our edits and we sent them to Gifford and Webster, we met with them and had a pretty, I would say, pretty long Zoom meeting where we went through how things are looking on a desktop, how are they looking on a cell phone, what are the limitations of survey logic with the software they're going with. We did talk in our round of edits a lot about survey logic and appropriate ways to use it, to kind of their frustration. They said recently their firm's been using Survey Monkey, and we all agree that Qualtrics is superior, but they're using Survey Monkey, so. I personally like Qualtrics too. I would just dump the software and just use Qualtrics. So.
It's expensive.
Yeah, I guess they, I guess there's a, you know, you get what you pay for, for sure. So anywho, let's go through some of these questions. How do you, Chair, how do you wanna do this? You want me to just move through it?
I think that's the best thing, Miles.
Okay. All right, so one of the first things, and this was something we had to think about, is how to determine where the survey taker is from. We did add an out-of-bath township option, because that could happen, that's a thing that can happen. With, given the limitations of their survey software, this was kinda the easiest way to divide it up. I don't think this geography is perfect, but I mean, there's like a million ways to do this, and this is just the way that we came up with.
Are you trying to sort it by zoning type, or just?
Nope, this definitely doesn't fall into zoning type.
So.
I, I don't know.
Where, this is just what they came up with. This is literally just, they looked at our road grid, and they just started making some geographies, early thoughts.
So, I mean, I, I see the advantage of. So, I mean, I, I see the advantage of using roads as the demarkers. So, I live on Clive Road, and so, I live in Section A. But the person across the street from me lives in Section D. Kate, for example, right? So, Kate would be clumped into those, the village.
Right, that was my wondering.
So, I'd say that we don't necessarily have to use the roads as the demarkers. You can move that D just above Slate Road to capture that, those subdivisions, I think where you live, Miles.
Yeah, and I would definitely put myself more in the village category.
I would just extend that line of the Herbison Road, red line, or move that line just before A down to match up with the Herbison Road.
And I'm not sure.
And then that would keep the rural, more rural, and the less rural clumped together, if, if that's the data we wanted from this question.
I think that is what you're trying to get at, though, right? Because you're trying to be like, okay, well, my assumptions are these people, and so if your assumptions are vindicated, then that tells you something. If your assumptions are broken, that also helps to say something.
Yeah, so if you run a line basically uh, what, south Herbison straight acrossed? Or just south of South Herbison, uh, off of, what is that, Angle, all across the Chandler? You would capture, that whole Section A would be quite large, but.
But like here, like divided at the, this parcel line, even maybe south, maybe like this.
Well, it would be large in area, but not necessarily large in population.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I do think it would make sense for Jason and I to be in the same.
Well, now is another question I have for you guys. Is there value, like, we talked about this with Rose, is there even value in like A, B, C, E, F? I'm like, those could all just be A.
Right.
And in terms of population, A still might be smaller population-wise than G.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Like, you might almost wanna divide G into two, I thought.
I think so too.
Like, you need the Chandler Road corridor as its own thing, and then you need the rest of Park Lake as its own thing.
The only value I would think might be people.
The only value in A, B, C?
In the southern part of the township are gonna be more impacted by the development happening, happening there than people at the northern end of the township, even though they might all be designated as rural. That's the only thing that I would.
So, what are you saying? Do you think A, B, C needs to stay broken out?
Well, I don't know about A, B, C, but certainly E and F.
Could be that its own block?
Be that's own separate block from.
Okay, what about G being divided into two blocks?
Yeah, I think A, B, C could be its own one.
We try to divide these up by type of housing? Type of stuff, because I'm looking at G, and in G, you've got all the stuff around the lake and Hawk Hollow in the same group, which to me makes no sense at all.
I do agree with that, the one, and I do, this was the hard thing for us, right? Because the, the kind of needle that we're trying to thread here is we don't want too many options, because then the survey taker is like, my god, twenty-six options. Oh, I don't wanna look at that, right? So, that's why, like, where areas are like, if A, B, and C can be combined, but then G can get divided out into three, maybe that's better, and maybe what we do, Ray, is we do, like, G, like Webster Road is one. Just take Webster Road straight down, that's a one. Then we take Hawk Hollow and we put a divide where Hawk Hollow is, that's two, and then we got the, the four twenty-five and the rest of Chandler and the, basically the apartments as three.
I think that's more useful data.
Yeah, isn't that more useful? That was our thought, isn't that more useful than A, B, C?
Go back to Chandler Road again. Because on the, on the east side of Chandler Road, south of Hawk Hollow, a few homes is not a lot.
There's not a lot, but then we also get into on the apartment buildings on the east side where I'm at, here we go. We got, you know, this, I mean, we have almost, it seems like a nothing parcel, but we have almost six hundred people that live in there.
So, isn't there a question about house, type of house you live in later on the question?
There is.
So, we could, we could identify that subgroup. So, two, two other pieces of information. One is, can they draw out and color Park Lake? Because if, if you're not savvy with maps, you're gonna be like, where the hell is Park Lake? I don't know where I live, right? And then that four twenty-five, wherever that's East Lansing cut out, you know, that, we're familiar with that, but no one else is. Well, no, the, the big.
Oh, yeah, the, what is this, big thing like labeled? Or just take it out, take the border out.
Who cares? No one lives there except a farmer.
Yeah, the one guy's not gonna do it, and if he does do it, then good, we got his input, yeah. Okay. Yeah, and they're just working off of, this is literally probably the GIS file we gave them, and they're like, that's the borders of the township. Okay, which that can be easily changed. Okay, so, put those as side notes, so, lake color and dissolve East Lansing four twenty-five. Thanks, Natalie. Okay.
Now, we're gonna use sixty-nine as one of the boundaries, in other words, where Drumhead Road is. Should that line drop back down to sixty-nine, there's basically nothing there.
It could, like, D, if we're bringing down this line down to here, maybe take the bottom section of D and bring it down to sixty-nine.
Uh, that makes sense, that would capture the Somerset.
Same, same thing for A.
Yeah, okay. Drop this down. Drop this down. Do that. Okay, just putting a couple of notes.
Alright. I'll move to the next one, uh, then age question, I don't think, and no, nothing there, right? Okay. Top three reasons for living in Bath? And you just select it like that, it's not having you order them, it's not like you get a number one, you get a number two, you, you just gotta pick three. It'll let you pick four, so maybe that's something we have to do, because people could throw our data.
Yeah, should have removed, and maybe it will when it's in its final version, but we'll ask about that, because that's problematic. Because people could just be quick in a way, and then they'll skew our data. Alright, but we like that question overall, it's a fine question.
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, um, the overall quality of life in Bath Township is, just a basic quality of life question, trying to get a sense of how they feel, so it's kind of a perception question.
Can, can you pick more than one on that?
No, so, what I'm doing, yeah. Okay, so then, in a few word, kind of an open-ended question, uh, and a few words explain your rating for this, so now we're trying to dial in on why they feel a certain type of way. Hopefully they don't dump on us and then X it out at this point, because we did take the dumping on question, like, was requested and moved it to the end. But. Rate the following items by importance as they relate to quality of life in Bath Township, so this is one of those questions where, uh, if the planning commission recalls, we've built it. It, it's a lot, there's a lot going on here, but we felt like the matrix was easier than what was there before. I don't know how we feel about that still. There's kind of, I think, I'm looking ahead here. There's a couple matrix questions, right, so that's, that's, in terms of like survey bandwidth, we've, we've got a couple of them. Because, see, like, here's another one, like, these are long, people's eyes are glazing over.
Yeah, page breaks.
Page break here.
Between each of the matrix.
Okay.
Because on the phone, it, it's long-form.
Okay.
Vertical form, not matrixed out.
Okay, um, what we probably will do too, when we at least do our events, is we will, um, we'll have an iPad, and we, we can hand the iPad to somebody and say, let them take on the iPad, so it's just a little bit easier to click through than their phone.
What are we trying to get at in the question prompt for number seven? Rate the following on how important you believe the item is to Bath Township. Is that like, the value that the Township Board of Trustees puts on things, the value that
I think it's a value that.
Residents assign it, or the value that they want to assign it?
I think that could be worded better, but I think what it's trying to say is, it's the value you assign it. Because you don't know the Board of Trustees' value, and you don't really care about their value.
Into Bath Township planning, the planning process as we.
I think to word it better, we probably should put rate the following item on how important you believe each item is, and just end it there, not to Bath Township.
What importance should it have in decision-making or something like that?
I, the caveat of the to Bath Township, I think, is just so to preface, like, hey, remember, we're only speaking about Bath Township here, not how important do you believe sidewalks are, because you could love sidewalks, but you might not love them in Bath.
Well, that's a possibility, you know?
So, we're asking people to rate the importance of, do we later on ask them to rates? Like, how well they're, how, how good they are in the township?
No, I don't think, because the survey.
It's just like, what issues do you care about?
Yeah, this is more, the whole preface, and that's an important point, the whole preface of the, these types of surveys with the comp plan is supposed to, and that's just like always a thing. It's supposed to be more like forward-thinking, because if we wanna know how sidewalks are now, let's do a sidewalk audit.
What if we added here, you believe each item is to the future development of Bath Township?
Yeah, I think that would, that creates clarity.
Yeah.
That would clarify.
On number seven. Okay. But overall, I think the matrix, even though it's like, I'm, you know, I think some eyes could glaze over, it's just like, okay, I'm just clicking through, and we did, I, I think we talked with Rose about narrowing it from some of these from, like, this one, just to get people through the survey. I think we, this was intentional, if I remember our conversation, she wanted to show you guys, like, here's a question with five categories, and here's a matrix with three categories, and try to suss out if you guys are okay with the three, because that will help, if we're gonna go with a lot of these matrices, three options is just inherently clip, more click, quick-friendly than I'm, I'm doing more while I'm doing this.
Yeah.
I mean, this gives me more data though on the backend, so it's like,
It does.
We wanted to assess where you guys are at with five options compared to three options.
Ninety-five percent of the time, the consultants will just give us back the percent of respondents who said very important or important. They'll dichotomize the results, just because it's more chewable by
Yeah.
Like, non-trained folks, so I think the three is, is just fine.
I think the three is the way to go too, because my eyes don't glaze over as much.
If you get too many categories, what I think is important, you may think is a little important.
Yeah.
We may, we may think it's had both the same importance, but we.
My main fear is always people seeing this and being like, I'm out.
Yeah.
You know?
That's true.
Yep. Okay, so we're, we're not a fan of three, okay. Question number eight, what characteristics or aspects of Bath Township could be improved? Be as specific as possible, but try to limit each response to more, no more than three to five words.
Why?
Just brevity, I guess.
Do you want, if, you wanna encourage more words from people?
Okay.
So, so, I mean, I don't think that text is, is necessary. The reason is that they're forcing brevity in the responses by the size of the box.
Okay. I'm cool with that, I mean, I've no, I'm not taking a hard stand on any of this, so.
Well, and it comes across as a little bit bossy, right?
Yeah, it's bossy, yeah, it's bossy. Yeah, it's a condescending, it's like, well, you don't think I can be brief? Yeah. Okay.
That box goes on forever.
Yeah, it will.
It's not limited.
I would paste the response that I wrote in the word.
I think it's fine to say be specific, but I don't know that you wanna limit the number of words.
All you have to say is, what do you wanna see improved in Bath Township?
Yeah, just take out this whole second sentence.
Do we want should or could?
Uh, that's a good question.
I'd say could.
Well, a lot of things could be, but should they be?
Well, that's true, Ray, yeah, you got a good point. What's important for Bath Township to improve?
Yeah.
What would you like to see improved?
Yeah, that's good.
What would you like to see improved in Bath Township?
That's good.
Okay. Simplify, number eight.
Yep. Good plan.
Okay. What's going on here? Oh, is it making me do that? Yeah, this is the, it won't let you move on if you don't do that one, I found that out last night, okay. Alright, cool. Please indicate how long you've lived in Bath Township, so now we're getting back to.
Just go back, say, okay, you don't have to go back, but let's just have a conversation about forced responses. I'm of the opinion that for a community survey like this, you do not force any responses. And in that particular circumstance, while you figured it out, why you weren't moving forward.
Oh, yeah.
A, a tech-savvy, a non-tech-savvy person would be like, what the heck's going on?
Highlight the.
And then they're gonna close the browser.
That's true, okay, so we'll let them know, and I, again, I don't know, I'm not tech-savvy enough to know if this is just because we're in like the display view.
No, it's that little star by the three.
Oh, it's like a required response, okay, 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 okay.
I mean, you gotta answer it.
So, we, that needs to be addressed. Um, please indicate how long you've lived in Bath Township, so I think this is just an interesting, probably a good question, I don't know. Alright, uh, how much longer do you expect? I also think this is like an interesting question. Like, I think you can gauge something, if, we're getting a bunch of like less than five years, that's a problem. We need to figure out like what's going on there.
Well, ninety-five, my friend wasn't five years old.
Alright, uh, please indicate how many total people are in your household, so these are really just these demographic questions, I guess, let me know. Uh, what is the best, uh, how do you best describe your current housing situation, or what best describes your current housing? So, uh, this was a question that we, we're talking about earlier, to help us dial in on where we're at. In terms of like just living status, okay, um. Which of the following, uh, strategies should be used to encourage attainable housing options within Bath Township? Please rank the options from most desirable to least desirable, with number one being the most desirable and number seven being the least desirable. Um, and then you just move it like this. And I do like that I can grab it, at first I thought I was gonna have to like sit here and do this. It, it, and I don't know how, is it working like that on the phones? Can I just grab and pull?
Yeah.
Okay, that, that makes this question easier for me. It's a little bit of reading, but it's like, okay, I can just quickly move some stuff around here. Alright, uh, do you have any other suggestions for housing strategies to encourage attainable housing options within Bath Township? Oh, which were not included in the previous question, so this was, I think, when we went over this one last time, there, we wanted an other option, and this is via Survey Monkey, it was explained to me that this is the best way to do this. This is the other option.
Wait for question fourteen?
Yeah, so like, if, if, in question thirteen, you, there's just, you're doing these and you're like, man, why aren't they bringing up this one thing? This is where you can bring up that one thing. And if you don't have that one thing, you skip it next, which I'm, some people will do, I would probably do if I was taking this.
Is that one of those required questions?
Fourteen?
No.
No, there's no asterisk.
I think number three was the only one that was.
What it was, so it, I failed out of it because I'd selected four, and so it's, it's a forced validation of three choices.
Of three, okay. There's gotta be another way they can do that though, because I think you are correct, like, oh, why isn't this working? I'm done here.
Yeah. Well, they're, they'll, they'll come back and say, if we don't force the validation, you'll end up with people who select four or five. Is it meaningful to us if we, if we have slightly dirty data?
I'd rather have, yeah, I agree, like, I'd rather have slightly dirty data than no data. Wouldn't you?
I agree with that, if I pick four or I pick five, it just adds a little to it. Most people will follow the direction.
At least, at least they took the rest of the survey.
They may have picked one too, which is fine.
Yeah, I shouldn't think of the program.
We should, yeah, what, that will be our first, hey, why can't we just do three? If you select number four, one of them pops off.
Yeah, but you're making a determination of which one goes.
It would be the first one they selected, I would assume.
No, 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 so, so, there, because Qualtrics have another option, you, you have forced response, forced validation, and suggested validation. And so, it pops up, hey, you selected four items, or you selected more than whatever items. This, my recommendation is that we don't force anything. Uh, the data will come back, we could say, you know, five percent of the respondents had more than three items. Do we randomly select three items, or do we just live with the fact that they found four items that are important?
Yeah, whatever.
I mean, the ranking. I mean, the ranking. Again, if you look for validation, what would it take to, you have one, two, and three? Is what we're looking for, how many votes would it take to shift that out of that grouping? And I don't think there'd be enough of them to make that happen, to.
We could have them rank, do a ranking style question too, can't we? Like, please rank your top three and just have them physically move those to the top like that one question.
Or we can just do like we did with the other question of. This is important, this is slightly important, this is not important.
Yeah.
Is there a back?
Yeah.
Button on this?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sure there must be.
We'll bring it up to them and see what they think. I guess I will say that whatever we, the plan was, to like whatever the last feedback is here. Is to implement it and then start rolling after this, like, we anticipate bringing it back again. Okay, so, bunch of just random questions, we talked about this one. To catch all, okay, um, which housing type do you think, uh, will meet your future housing needs in ten to fifteen years? So this is, you know, trying to get more at that long-term thinking, this could be, this could be a helpful question if people don't see themselves here. You know? And then obviously they still have an other and they can give us feedback, like, don't, I don't see myself here.
So what's the difference between the.
See what's happening there.
For multifamily or single family, multi-level versus single family ranch?
Oh, that's important because it get, it dials in, that's a like a kind of a hot topic in the housing space right now. And in terms of like housing stock and housing supply municipalities, the single-family ranch is probably the most desirable housing product. On the market right now, and so it's.
Everybody my age is like talking about ranch houses, because they don't want to do stairs.
Don't want to do stairs, and so that's what. That's what we're trying to get at here, is if if we get back every, a ton, which I assume we might.
Bigger house or?
Yeah, are we looking for those McMansions still, or are we looking for ranches and then the township can make policy accordingly?
We're not gonna make any policy.
We could.
We could, but we're not.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, we could dabble. I was advocating for dabbling in policy this morning, um.
Do we have a question about, what are the mother-in-law suites or whatever, accessory houses?
Accessory building dwellings?
No, but I think that's a good point and something I, we have.
Seems like it should be incorporated in there somewhere.
Yeah, um.
Tiny houses.
What's the number fifteen?
Well, so, I mean.
Eighty use.
What, principal use?
Yes.
So we don't.
That's such a good catch, I can't believe that they brought up. So we add eighty use as a, uh.
And don't use that terminology.
Yeah, what what terminology, because it's, well, what terminology should we use instead of accessory dwelling unit?
Yeah, because accessory dwelling, you'd have to put a definition to it, because.
No, agree, but what was, what's the layperson using these days?
Mother-in-law suite. I mean, bait, that's what I understand it as, I'm sure that there's a.
That's what I'm just trying to think.
Some people are gonna interpret that as part of the build hu- big house and.
Yeah.
Right, as opposed to separate structure.
The key thing with existing, accessory housing is on the same lot as the main house.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Correct.
I don't know.
It could be.
I'm asking AI. I didn't even know how to ask the questions, like, alright, so, mother-in-law suite, granny flat. Backyard cottage, guest house. Guest house is good.
Guest house, I think, yeah.
Carriage house, uh, other regional, a casita, a tiny house, studio apartments. Apartment over the garage, secondary suite or accessory apartment. I like guest house.
Guest house or accessory apartment.
Yeah, we could slash it or something.
Yeah.
Okay, so what's add, nope, add that out, I think that's a good catch.
We need it, I was getting.
Guest house gets into the rental issues too, then.
Yes, yes, it would, yeah.
I personally like granny flat.
Yeah, well, yeah, once you say granny flat, then mother-in-law suite was not sounding so mean. Alright, uh, sixteen, and it is odd to me that, like.
There you put.
We only got one question, well, we got the definitions like you guys talked about, so we could just, and we tried to, remember, this is significantly shorned up. From what was there before, but, um. It's just odd that we only have one question on this page, where other pages, I felt like it was just built, too built out. Um, where should commercial development take place in Bath Township, click all that apply. So this is, remember, we put some before, we put some caveats to try to dial in where we're talking about. And some, okay, so that's fine, alright, what challenges do you see for agriculture in Bath Township, click all that apply. Yeah, I asked some of those ag questions in there, um, what type of non-traditional, uh, uh, agriculture activities? Would you support on existing farms? So this gets to that question that we discussed, um, especially in light of the recent peacock.
Peacock.
Um, conversations, yes. Uh, what type of, yep.
Existing farms. Is it important that we say existing farms or?
It's a good, I don't think it is, I, it isn't to me.
Might be a new farm.
Could be a big lot, that there, you got some trees on it and they're clearing some trees and establishing a farm.
Could we say agricultural property?
What types of non-traditional agricultural activities would you support on farms?
I would just say with support, period, support, or question mark.
Would you support, yeah, just take out on it, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would too, Jason, I think that's a good point.
Great, cool, I, I think this question is big, because like, uh, depending on what happens on this question for or against. I mean, regardless, one of the action items of this plan is gonna be reviewing the buy rate and special use land uses in the rural district.
Yep, good point.
Just from our conversations recently, like. There's been so much agrotourism that's going on in the, in that industry these days, that's not covered in our ordinance.
Slide that down a little bit.
Yeah.
So if you, no, the other way.
Okay.
What type agriculture was, would you support?
Yeah, so I got on.
I think the one that says banquet halls, if we don't put on existing, on farms or something, yeah, banquet halls are fine if. That's something to say, why is a banquet hall an agricultural activity?
Oh, I now I remember.
Yeah, but, yeah, interesting, I just went to the winery banquet hall over by Langsberg.
Yep.
And they've done a nice job with it.
Yeah, I like that spot.
But I was also up in Ludington, and they're still fighting over the group that took the bowling alley and converted it. And everybody is just pissed about the noise.
Unless it's a bowling alley.
In Ludington, there's a split on highways going to Hamlin and State Park, a bowling alley was right there at the split. Well, he put a venue in the back of the bowling alley.
Outdoor venue.
Outdoor music. And all the neighbors along the lake get the sound.
So, on existing farms, I mean, if you look at the commercial scale renewable energy, I think that's why we specified on existing farms. You liking that better now?
No.
Well, I think there's two questions there.
Could we just put commercial scale renewable energy projects on existing farms, like?
Down there.
Just down there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you could do that, that, that would definitely be a game changer.
I think that takes it away from just the private, small residential scale.
So are any of those alternative uses or non-traditional agricultural uses used by right in the rural district?
They're not, none of these are even in our ordinance.
No.
So there's no mention of them, restrictive or not restrictive on existing, yeah, okay.
Are you gonna open a agrotourism?
Farm stand on wheels? Interestingly enough, though, when I read the special use permit that was issued to, um, the Peacock Road Farm. Backway land, where, like, two thousand and two, because the land use categories weren't covered. They just kind of described in, the township described in detail what their thoughts were about the type of activities that would occur. And probably use that as a proxy, a stand-in for the non-existence of the land uses.
Have you had any complaints on that usage?
No, and that was one thing that was talked, the chair was here at the meeting and there was just overwhelming support from police. Fire, the people that were there that night.
You know what we should add there is operating a, a full-scale bar at a nature center.
I don't know if.
In view of typical nonprofits fundraising techniques.
Beer, beer and birding.
So, are we leaving existing, existing farms at the top of this or not?
Well, so it sounds like we've got good feedback that will cut this from this part up here, but we'll add existing farms to answer the renewable concern.
It's not a problem with banquet halls. Because a banquet hall someplace else is not a problem, back, you know, the people may think, well, yeah, if you're gonna put it.
But there are banquet halls on some of these farms.
Yeah, it's what Peacock Road has, basically.
People are asking this question, if we don't put on farms up there, they may say, yeah, I'm in favor of banquet halls, but not on farms.
Existing farms here as well.
And tasting rooms, same thing, tasting rooms don't have to be on a farm.
Yeah, the question does get weird when you take out the on-existing farms.
Okay, well.
But I, I think we could take out existing, like, on farm agricultural or farm operations.
Established farms.
Well, even non-established, if somebody.
Well, they establish it in the future, then it's established.
What about just agricultural properties?
I guess if they establish, it presents existing. Agricultural properties. I think just keep it farms, let's take out the word existing, let's keep it, let's use farms.
Same thing, yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool. Alright, nineteen, what type of industrial development would you most like to see in Bath Township? So this was that industrial question that we're missing, that we added.
Let's be careful about that centers. But the other question is where?
Well, we asked them that question about.
Above that, I think, we go back a couple miles. That was commercial.
I think we can duplicate that.
Yeah.
Commercial question after this.
So, okay, well, I'll move on for now, I guess, uh.
No, so, I I think the sense is, if I'm hearing, at least the two of us.
Yeah, well, what's up?
Um, so we asked about commercial uses and where, where would you like to see commercial developments? We're asking here, the type of industrial development, we could reuse that commercial, the location of the commercial development. Here, so that we get it, so we understand where people would like to see industrial development.
As long as people are making that link between commercial and industrial being kind of in the same wheelhouse.
In the same what?
Wheelhouse.
Are they?
You're saying, let me go back. Make a second question for industrial or add in the word industrial to this question, in addition to commercial?
I think, separate, separate question.
Separate question, so just make another one of this and then it's inside a commercial, it says industrial, okay. So let's make a duplicate question sixteen, replace the word commercial with industrial.
I think you should restrict the area on Chandler Road where they would support it. Well, that may be, may result to get back.
Well, you also, if a bunch of people put Chandler Road, right, I mean, the takeaway for the planning commission is like, okay, then that comes into you guys' charge. Like, okay, a lot of people are saying they'd like to see industrial on Chandler Road, through our knowledge and our tools of zoning, these are the areas we're gonna limit it to. Like, you guys are the expertise at the end of the day that said zoning. Okay, cool, alright, we can do that, but then, and so we'll slot that question in either after sixteen or prior to nineteen. And then they can answer nineteen and we'll know where they think it should go.
No, with the question sixteen, weren't those areas selected for viability for commercial?
That is true.
Would we want to think about adding or taking away? Like, Webster Road, well, I guess we.
Like, click, introduce areas where commercial makes more sense.
Well, industrial.
Alright, sorry, industrial, yes.
Yeah, Webster Grove is sixty-nine-five road, that doesn't make sense for industrial.
Yeah, I mean, that's our main, that's a one of the main spots for it.
Actually, no, but the.
That was where the, the warm fast food was gonna go.
Right, and and that's not even addressing it, what kind of industrial is that?
Well, that's what, that's what we get from this one.
Well, but it's not listed, is it?
We need.
Ball bearing.
That was light manu- yeah, that, believe it or not, that's considered light manufacturing, yeah. We don't, nowhere in Bath Township do we get into the truly heavy manufacturing uses, or even being permitted. And there's a whole doctrine behind why that is. I do think, I do, from the planning side though, what is legally considered light industrial? I don't think most people, laypeople would consider light industrial, like, when you want a layperson thinks a light industrial, they're probably not thinking of a. Bolt and, um, manufacturing plant as a light industrial use. But of all the industrial uses in the world that can happen, it is ve- very much on the lighter side. Okay, uh, so that kind of solves our problem there, we're like nineteen, I think, in general, uh, what are your biggest concerns about development? So this is more, more of the anti-development people, gives them a question of like, hey, you guys gotta make sure you're covering some of this stuff. And then.
How does enough development elsewhere fit into that?
Like, I think that just, it's just that NIMBY argument, like, sorry, somewhere else, we don't need it here. Uh, my priority.
Is that really a concern, though?
For some people.
For some, I'm, the, I'm, this is so, this is outside of my thinking, so I don't know.
What about just enough development already here? Township is developed enough.
Enough development here, instead of elsewhere.
Better.
NIMBY?
So.
It almost feels like it's a reverse concern.
It is.
Okay, agreed, I I I'll argue with that, so on question twenty, they want enough development, you know, here, not elsewhere. And then they got the, another kind of, if you, if we didn't get to it here, you know, give us your thoughts here. Alright, the township has several dirt roads, please rate the level of agreement you have with each of the following statements.
Back to dirt roads.
I like the dirt roads.
Yeah, I don't think you should say dirt roads though.
I thought we came to gravel.
Yeah, I thought you were saying gravel.
Say gravel.
Let's put a point. They like that.
No matter what the song says.
I think they changed it here.
Yeah, they had it up there.
They did on the top.
Intact.
Put dirt roads in parentheses.
Okay.
Or just put them all gravel roads.
Yeah, why are we even referring to dirt roads?
I feel like it's local parlance to say dirt roads, but gravel roads is probably the more formal.
Okay, so what we're liking these, we're liking these gravel road questions, we will swap out, we're not, okay?
So.
What we think?
What are we gonna get from this?
I mean, that is a fair question, I thought, there was some of them that, um, I think you guys fully cut out. And then when we were meeting with Rose, she was like, we'll just keep it in and see if they have any before we make the final cut. They're trying to give you guys options.
I feel like it's useful data for people that, I mean, there are a lot of people who put a lot of thought and effort into our roads. And how we spend our road money at the township level and at the county level.
Yeah, that's true.
And I think this would be useful data for people making those decisions, if it's like, we are sick of dirt roads. This needs to be priority number one, if there's gonna be any growth in development in this township, then we gotta change that. Versus, I don't mind them, I recognize it's part of living in a rural area, I think that that gives some. helpful insight to making some of those future decisions.
There's people that moved there because of that, because of a dirt road.
Yeah, you generally know there's gonna be less, less traffic and probably fewer developments if it's a gravel road.
We like, so, yeah, we're cool with it?
No, I'm not, like, so, the issue is like, you're gonna get, you have people who live on gravel roads and people who don't. As someone who lives on a gravel road, my responses may look identical to someone who doesn't live on a gravel road, but it could mean completely different things.
That was something that even Beth brought up, actually, cause she, you know, she's all over the place. And I would say, like, if I was taking this survey, like, I'm more like where you're at, Kate, like, where I'm like, yeah, dirt roads are sick. But then, like, I don't live on a dirt road, and I imagine if I did live on a dirt road, I might have a different opinion, cause like, my tie rod's constantly busted.
Well, that's uh air quality, I mean, I bought an air quality monitor because of dust, and since township is only chloriding twice a year, instead of three times a year, uh, that's an issue.
Not decided by the county.
But then I fall back to Kate's point, though, too, where I'm like, now, from like the municipal budget side of it, you're like, okay, we can't, we're trying to keep up with the paved roads we have, like, if you get a bunch of survey data back that says generally speaking, people find these acceptable, then it kind of like relieves the pressure to improve them.
Yeah, but I, I still pay the same taxes and same tax rate as someone who lives on, you know, on paved roads.
Yeah.
And so, so the thing is, it's like, I like dirt roads, well, hell, if eighty percent of the respondents don't live on dirt roads, and they like dirt roads because they don't ever drive on them. And they like the, the, you know, bucolic idea of living in the rural where there are dirt roads.
That's me.
Well, that doesn't give you any benefit.
I know.
I don't live on a dirt road, but I still have opinions about them, and I may need to take them to get other places in and out of the township. Especially recently with all the detours, probably people have a lot more experience with dirt roads than they had before.
I mean, we could workshop, like, all right, so the results are that eighty percent of the population says that they like dirt roads and they feel that if they're changed paved, they're gonna lose the rural character.
I wouldn't expect that result, but.
Well, let's say, so we get it.
But if we do get it, then we look at those survey respondents and go back to our map and say like, yeah, where they at.
Where they, where they.
And then we make some conclusions.
Yeah, so they all live in D, and so four of them live on Drumhauer and the rest live in the village, right? So, but what, what policy is gonna be adjusted with, with this? I would say if you live on a dirt road, please rate how well they're maintained, then you get actual information, right? Cause people who live on dirt roads say, well, I love them, they're great, or it sucks because my car keeps breaking down, or whatever.
But I would argue that the roads aren't only for the people who live on them, I mean, you drive on Webster Road every day, I would imagine, it's paved, that your taxes paid for. But you don't actually live on it, right? So I, I feel like the roads as a public good are for everybody, not just the one that you specifically live on.
So do you need an extra question that says, do you live on a dirt road or gravel road, or?
Do you travel on dirt roads on a regular basis? Right?
And it could be no, I specifically avoid them because they're not paved.
Or how frequently do you drive on gravel roads? How frequently do you drive on gravel roads?
It says I avoid gravel roads when possible.
So take that out, put in a separate question that says, how frequently do you, do you drive on gravel roads? And then you ask the three remaining questions. Then you have, you can say, all right.
Well, if you're gonna ask that question, though, Jason, how are you gonna respond to it?
So you just.
Because they give you a choice of, I agree, I disagree, blah, blah, blah.
So you create question twenty-three, and a new question.
Well, we'll preface this question with the, do you live on a dirt road, if we go here.
Or how frequently do you travel on a dirt road?
Travel, okay.
And so you'll still get all the respondents, right, so from never travel on a dirt road to every day, right?
And if you live on a dirt or gravel road, you're also subject to other things such as dust, you know.
And will we remove the, I avoid dirt roads at when possible?
No, I think, I mean, that gives you valuable information, right?
Okay, is everyone okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, like Jason says, what information are you gonna get from it, and is it usable?
We're not gonna do anything with the data.
No, that's true.
I mean, if you got good feedback that says that the gravel roads are well-maintained, right, and then, you know, most people somewhat agree or completely agree. That tells you that you're doing road maintenance on dirt roads well.
Yes, dude, that data means do nothing, no po- no policy change required.
But if eighty percent say disagree or completely disagree, then you have actual information, like, oh, hey, uh.
Yeah, look at it.
Uh. These data aren't gonna affect decisions on paving, right? The next road that's gonna be paved is gonna be Drumhauer, and that's probably gonna be five to ten years from now.
Yeah, what would determine, but it.
And then next road after that will be twenty-eighty-nine.
So all that this question will probably amount to in terms of policy would be spend more money on maintaining dirt roads, spend less money on maintaining dirt roads.
Well, it could also flesh out where dirt roads are not being maintained.
That's true, too, but I guess we're not asking that, but we could surmise that from the map, your preference question and this.
Yeah. Or how about adjust question twenty-three?
Okay.
Please, please tell us how uh frequently you travel on dirt roads, uh, and what se- and any segments.
I do agree with, let's remove this question, cause at the end of the day, the only thing, the only policy decision of paving a dirt road that is gonna be made, it, this question doesn't matter at all, cause we're gonna do a traffic count study, and we're gonna be like, this road gets used more, it's gaining. So, I agree with that, let's, let's rip out the language.
Take three, twenty-three, write out whatever.
Twenty-three, immoral poison, let's, can you say again?
How frequently do you travel on gravel roads? And be never to every day.
Okay. Okay. We good?
I like that.
Okay, bike lanes, we didn't want a bike lane question, but they kept it in to just ask you one more time, it's not my choice. Do you guys want it?
No.
No.
Okay, the survey is getting kind of long.
Be nice to have bike lanes.
What kind of consultants get feedback and say, oh, we're.
They were just giving, they just wanted to give you options, they're like, hey, we'll reword it, see if they like it.
Did they reword it?
I think they might have changed some of it.
And twenty-six is no better.
Whoops.
You've already got those responses in the.
Bunch of upy bicyclists up there.
They are out of Detroit.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so we're not liking these two.
No. I don't think many people are gonna bike to work from here.
Okay, cool, I mean, that's fine, and I, we do have the, I, I, yeah, it's hard to argue that we don't have good data, we just did the mountain motorized plan. And this survey's getting long, okay. Oh, where do you find yourself, where do you find difficulty parking in Bath Township, this was just to broaden out that parking question.
You make a garage, it's gotta take you down.
I think this is a fair question, I think there, you can get, we might get nothing useful out of it, we might get something useful out of it, I, I think this is just keeping it more open. People complain about parking, so I'd be, I'd be interested to see what they say.
Senior center, that's what they're gonna say, senior center.
If they say that, then that just points to the need for a campus study, you know, and I don't think that's a bad thing, or if they say.
Farmer's market.
Or if they say a business like Monticello's, I mean, that's interesting, too, that tells us something about our site plan review planning, like, we shouldn't be designing parking lots like that. So I think you could attend, I feel like this is a wild card question, but I'm not mad about it.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay.
All right, please rate your uh options on the following statement regarding signage in Bath Township, so the signage question.
Could we just say signs?
Cause right here, the following statement regarding signs in Bath Township, yeah, signs. They're using signs interchangeably down here, so signage, signs. I like how they called out where.
Yeah, I do, too.
Our welcome signs are, so people can be like, what?
Yep. People are gonna go, where on Chandler?
Where, well, they're gonna go where on Webster.
Yeah, exactly.
Where?
For Chandler.
There, there is a welcome to Bath sign on Chandler.
Where?
The same wooden kind that's out here on um, it's before that cart place. And you're like, that's another funny thing about it, it's like up here, it's like right in there, like, I think that might be it. Well, that's ours, that, that might be ours, it's one, it's right in here, that might, it, it's either that object there, that object there, or that object there.
It's the middle one.
It's the middle one, and it's a wooden one, just like our, that's what I'm saying.
Isn't there also one?
There's one on Webster down here.
Or like the one that's on the post over there?
There's, isn't there one on Clark Road by Watson?
There's a couple random post ones, that we only are calling out the wooden ones.
The fact that you have people who drive secondhand the road every day and.
I'm, that's what I'm saying.
I've driven around the road for twenty years, I've never seen that.
That's what I'm saying. It's hard, it's easy to miss, it needs a coat of paint.
Come by bars, you see.
So you're saying we need to add lights to it?
Yeah, we could, some uplighting could help, some uplighting could help. I mean, this is the, this is the downside of building signs on wood, though, too, they, wood requires long-term maintenance, wood fades, wood sunrises. Okay, so, yeah, science question needed, I've, I've been saying it's talking about signage to anybody that will listen since I got hired here.
Yep.
Please rate your uh opinions on the following statements regarding uh regulations in Bath Township, this was that regulation question, I don't, this is another one that's kind of a wild card, but probably can gain some interesting insight in terms of actionable items on the backend of this comp plan.
Is part of the contracts to have the consultant, consulting firm share the raw data back with the township?
Yeah, we own the data.
Okay.
Yeah.
Who in this survey is gonna know the answer to that one, land use laws make housing more affordable in Bath Township?
That is true, we're gonna worry.
Isn't the opposite true?
No, because land use, if you bring in the uh data farms, you know, cut down on our taxes elsewhere, your property, because we charge them the money.
Well, I would argue that your land use laws in Bath Township actually do make housing more affordable, like currently, because like, for example, one interesting thing about Bath Township is housing is a byright use in all of our districts, that's like unheard of in my industry, so that's really interesting that you guys do that. And so that makes the potential supply of housing greater, so in theory cheaper, in practice, it can, it's arguable.
So it's the regulations that make it more.
Yeah, and a lot of that, though, is outside of the, like, I, I've always argued, like, I had a big debate with somebody from the MEDC the other day, but I mean, I think the biggest burden to home construction costs is the state of Michigan Building Code. No amount affixed to the zoning code in every municipality is gonna replace. Like, I don't know if you've seen some of the stuff they've been doing with the building code in the last four years, but it is absolutely bananas.
It is.
And like, I mean, it's all in the recent years, which is crazy. Okay, so anyways, just.
I don't know what you can say about that, we, we'll try to speak, we'll, Mark, to your point, we'll try to talk to them about, can we get the layperson to understand some of this? Is there anything else, I, the land use one, I don't think people are gonna get, the zoning, I think just use the word zoning, most people understand what zoning means.
Yes, they do.
I think we're gonna get a lot of people, especially in northern Bath, that are gonna say strongly agree to this.
Yeah, I imagine they are.
And that'll be interesting to see, too.
So what, just, I would take out the land use laws, there's really nothing that is useful that.
Okay. Yeah, what, what are you gonna do with it? Like, what will we do with the information?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure how they're gonna adjust it, and then, what do you, I mean.
I don't know how many people are gonna understand what it means, even.
Or what we're gonna do with the information.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree, Jason.
So just remove all of that one?
I think you could just remove that.
Okay.
It's irrelevant.
I like the last two, though.
Yeah.
Well, I like, and I like this one because, and me, I'm biased, cause I am a planner, I'm like, oh, we gotta follow the rules, but I do, this is how I feel, I'd be like, yeah, strongly agree, like, I don't want my neighbor having some giant trailer with like a compound next to my house, that sucks. So.
So we need an ordinance that doesn't allow people to park their SUVs and stuff, like, not the SUVs.
We, I would say at this point, we might need an ordinance that says you cannot um live in a trailer year-round on your property.
Why?
All vehicles, in certain, not in, all vehicles in low and medium residential have to be parked on paper.
You can do it from medium up, I don't, that's fine.
Except for if you live on a dirt road.
All right, so anyways, uh, how do you feel about the current development around your house in Bath Township? So this is just a status pulse check question of, you know, how are we doing? I mean, though, yeah, remember that the whole principle of zoning is to reduce land use conflicts, so it's, sometimes it's worth it to take a pulse and say, are, are we reducing conflict?
I think neutral can be better worded.
What you suggest?
Yeah, but yeah.
I think you could remove it.
Indifferent?
Just remove it.
It's mostly incompatible, most compatible, I, I mean, I have no issues with the current developments.
Isn't that what neutral means?
It is, but is, how often do you use neutral in day-to-day conversation with your neighbors?
I don't know, I feel like it's an understood term.
Today feels neutral to me. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it seems odd to me, right, it doesn't, not like natural language that.
I agree.
My neighbors refuse.
Yeah, doesn't seem like anything you'd normally use in a conversation.
Say no concerns.
Yeah, that, I'm comfortable with that.
That would be more.
No concerns.
Well, using that to say is very compatible. Well, maybe, maybe it is.
Or completely agreeing.
I don't know, but that's kind of, they're probably gonna pick that if they have neutral, I guess, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, it's interesting.
I think neutral is more like, the word for me is like, I'm indifferent. Like, when I see neutral, I'm like, ah.
Or you just say no opinion.
Yeah.
No opinion.
Is that useful? And you could say that.
No opinion's good.
I don't care.
Yeah, I don't care, why are you asking me this? I mean, I think that's worth knowing, too, if a bunch of people just straight don't care, maybe we don't need to worry as much about buffering, you know, between land uses. I mean, all this data can translate to policy, it just depends on.
They didn't want more housing.
I don't think they were putting don't care on some, people care, but they have no concerns about it.
Just kidding.
That's different than not caring.
Yeah, that's true. But we still, I think that's fine, okay. Um, if you own a business in Bath Township, how do you feel about the current development around your business, so remember, we, this is one that was requested, I apply the same to neutral again, okay? Please describe incompatible developments near your home or business, so if they, and again, the survey logic is, isn't Qualtrics, what, what I would wish we could do is if they picked these, then this one would appear, but since it's not a thing, I guess, we're defaulting to stuff like this, but if, if you.
No, they can make that happen, so.
On survey, they were like pretty adamant about it.
Yeah, so Qualtrics is called display logic, right?
Yeah.
They can use skip logic, uh, to make this happen, they'd have to incorporate page breaks, so basically, click that, and then that would be the end of the page.
And then.
Or whatever, uh, and then on the next page would be quite.
Just this question?
Question thirty-two.
Or if they didn't pick that, that page wouldn't be there.
And if they didn't pick it, skip thirty-two.
Okay, what's, we'll talk to them about skip logic.
We'll be like, Rose, hey, we got people that work at Michigan State on our planning commission, you can't be doing this to us. What type of activity uh should home-based businesses, commercial slash business activities that occur at a residence be able to engage in, so this is getting to probably are, I would say, at least in my time here, one of the calls slash just conversations we've had in the most about kind of these more interesting businesses coming on, I think it's a worthwhile question. slash just conversations we've had in the most about kind of these more interesting businesses coming out. I think it's a worthwhile question. Okay.
Do we have any ordinances on?
We do. We have a whole. We have a whole ordinance about it and we have one applicant that's come through, but we've had several that have gone close. And most recently, we had a gentleman called me who was interested in buying the house and I think still is in there. I think they're in talks right now, so we'll see what comes of it. But he does out of an accessory building on his current property. I think he lives outside the Grand Ledge area. Um Aqua.
Oh, aquaculture.
No, um it's something to do with cremation via water for animals. And he was wondering if he would be able to do that as a home based business on the property on Drumhiller Road that's for sale right now. And I was like, you'd have to get. I was like, and so then I'd ask him all the qualifying questions and if he trips enough of them, which he did. Um, he would have to come before you guys first home based special use permit if he ends up buying that house.
There's state regulations on that too.
And oh, yeah, I'm sure. Yeah. And there and that would be all like that would be part of the conditions of approval is proof provided that he's meeting all the various regulations. But I'm just they comes up. It comes up all the time just because it doesn't always make its way to you guys. It's. I would say I probably get one phone call a month about it. Like that's kind of the level of where people's curiosity is. Um. Do you believe local township ordinances have helped or hurt your ability to enjoy or improve your property? Why? So this was that question where I like put it at the end.
I'm gonna answer that. I'm neutral.
Yeah, people are gonna. I think we'll get some spicy takes.
I wanna see the word cloud.
So, yeah. And then obviously, like, hey, have we not mentioned that would you, you know, anything else? And cool. Alright, cool. Alright, well, thanks for the feedback, guys. Thanks for going through the process. Um moving forward, like I said, we'll um take this feedback to the consultants, work on everything. And we are starting to get some events planned out. We're reaching out to different stakeholders around the township and we're gonna try to be lining up where we get a table with stuff that's already happening. So we're kind of getting into that fall season. So some of our thoughts right now is uh the library's hosting a couple of events. There's the school is doing a trunk or treat. Uh Peacock Road Farm was an option for us when they do their pumpkin patch um stuff here. We could put a table on the parking lot, say, you know, as people pull up, you know, try to see if they want to take the survey. So if anybody's got any of our ideas or feedback, let us know. I think the Giffel folks will, it's in their contract to help us with two events. But myself and staff will work um additional events as needed. And then I'm I I still don't know. We gotta get with Giffel on what their plan is for, you know, are we doing postcards? What's our market? Well, obviously, we'll do the normal stuff, the township website, the Friday Report, uh Facebook posts, take the survey. But uh there should be, Giffel should have some strategy that's included in our contract with them for helping us push out this material.
Football games.
We thought about football games. We I don't know what you guys' opinion like. Would you think it's odd that like the township government is there with a table at the football game?
I think it's fine.
Yeah.
You gotta have something to do during the downtime.
Do you think it like if we did do that, you think we should do a pregame halftime? Like just do a pregame in peace or?
Yeah, and I would just have a bunch of little cards, little index cards printed up with this QR code and hand them out. And people can sit and do the survey on their phone. Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's say scan it. It's on their phone.
Yeah, we'll put like that on a poster and we can have, but we'll also have like our iPad and we'll have a paper one in case people are like older and they don't wanna, you know, do it on the phone or iPad. We're like, just hey, fill it out on paper. We'll we'll enter.
What's the survey window?
Um, I don't know. I'll get your feedback on that. I don't. I would say it's gonna run for at least uh two months.
Two months?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a little bit of time with the survey and that's why we wanted to get it running. That way we don't like push our survey window into like three weeks. That'd be problematic.
Did you mention township newsletter too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I I didn't mention, but that would be a good one. I think that's a given one. I don't think we'll make the winter uh tax mailing. I think we'll be closing it up by the time we get around to that. So, okay, cool. And we'll let you guys know what what some of those events are if anybody's interested and wants to participate, you know, we'll push that out. Alright, cool. Do you want us to move to the next item, Chair?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead. Yep.
Okay, so concerning the rental ordinance, I think this came before you guys before my time here at least. But so far, me and staff, we've been going through other rental ordinances for other communities like Meridian, East Lansing, Allendale, Marquette, communities like that that already have implemented rental ordinances. And we're kind of seeing how they went about their implementation process and how that runs just day to day. But we did want to get some feedback because there's obviously a lot of moving parts to this kind of thing. And a major piece of it is who do you regulate? Do you regulate all rentals? Do you regulate just long term people, just commercial people or everybody, including like short term B R B O, Airbnb?
Which we felt like that question was answered. The Airbnb question, we got, or at least in the last board's time, they were like, no.
I have no idea what the Airbnb short term rental market in Bath Township is like. I mean, I know of one.
Oh, there's definitely more than one.
There's more than I I right, but I'm never looking in this area. So I really have just no idea of.
It's not super pop. It's not super popular, but there's more. There's more than you would think.
Do you have a number?
Um, when we were doing some.
Away shut down those that were in our neighborhood.
See, that's.
Right.
When we were doing some work at our house, we I looked for one because my wife just couldn't do it. Um and we ended up finding one on Slate Road, like literally like a mile from us, which was crazy to me. Um but I wanna say there was like twenty.
Really? Oh, wow. I'm surprised by that.
There was like there was like three around Park Lake area.
Is it worth just having them register and, you know?
Well, no, so we I think that I I'm not trying to take away from out here, but that part of the question, Jim, I think at this point for me has been answered by a previous board. What the the impetus to bring this back on our work plan was and I don't know if you guys have seen on Facebook too, there was really two impetuses that kind of moved this up. We have our work plan that you guys give us with all these various items and then depending on what's going on and where we're getting pulled from the public and our leadership determines how we categorize our work plan. Last year, when schools started up, we had vast issues with the villages and Bath Township actually made the news a couple of times for not the right reasons. Because of the state of the villages, the apartment. The villages have since sold and the new owners are doing a better job and we had to put in place kind of regulations with our building department to kind of do spot inspections because it's just how bad the maintenance was at the villages. Um, so that was kind of thing number one that tripped us. And then thing number two, I know if you guys have seen in the last month on the Bath Facebook community page, just renters kind of outing themselves of like, look at this state of my apartment. Does anyone know a good way I can fix my floor? And we're just like, oh, my God, you know, like what's going on? So that's what has pulled and I was gonna explain more. The you wanna talk about the two options of kind of where we're at and why we didn't want to put too many words to paper without coming to you guys and talking to you.
So just to answer your question, Airbnb, I just did a search of Bath Township. There's two around Park Lake. There's one over by Timber Ridge Golf Course. There's one uh over by Marco's Pizza. Actually, two over there. So I don't know if that's East Lansing or Bath.
Close, might be.
So so it's we're not talking about and I and I think, you know, uh.
You got with Marco's Pizza on East Lansing Road?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Not East Lansing. That's probably East Lansing.
Anyhow, there's not an overabundance of the Airbnbs.
No, there's not like a ton. I will say that when I've like tried to pay attention to this market though, just because of the nature of the demographics of our township. A lot of the older people that have homes in Bath will leave in the winter and go to Florida and then that's when they're Airbnb. And so our numbers spike in the winter, go down in the summer. Okay, anyway, sorry.
Yeah, uh anyways, I almost touched on it, but basically to implement the plan or to create an implementation plan, it's really one way or the other. Like we regulate everybody or including the Airbnbs or not. As there's like not that many. Or we do only commercial. So like that's like the larger scale.
You can't.
Units.
We did talk about, no, you can't cut Airbnb. We could just say long term rentals, everybody.
Yeah.
We could keep short term rentals out of it. And you just have to put caveat like what is long term, what is short term, we'd have to define. But that's a way to remove Airbnbs out of it.
And then you could also remove like smaller scale, like mom and pop type renters or landlords, you could call them. And say like, oh, if a development has fifty plus units for rent, then they fall under this category or this classification of rental license, which is how a couple of the municipalities we looked at today. But there's really a million different ways people about this. So it's kind of hard to get some feedback to see like where your guys' heads were at for this kind of thing and what you guys would like to see.
So somebody that owns a house, has the houses, they rent some individual houses that wouldn't wouldn't fit into this?
Hmm, well, it depends. So, yeah, like I always said, I think just to reiterate, the options are do nothing, right? That's always an option. Um, regulate all rentals, including short term rentals. Take short term rentals out of it. So you're just, it would be the mom and pop, single family home. It's like uh like where Karen rents from um Herb. Like Herb would get roped up into that one as well as the villages. So everyone from Herb to the villages would be regulated. Or you take the Herbs of the world out of it and you say uh entities that have more than you would you would have to assign a number here and what that number is, we don't know. That's what we're asking you guys. Eight units or more on a parcel, thirty units or more in a parcel, fifty. Like you would set a number and then those entities that have let's say fifteen dwelling units or more would have to then be required to get a rental license from the clerk and then be subject to the implementation plan that Ally laid out for that we're gonna lay out, which we'll bring back to you once we've established. We can't even talk about an implementation plan like in for staff until we know the answer to this question. Because depending on the answer to this question, depends on what the rest of the implementation plan looks like.
I think all of those types of rentals minus the short term should have some sort of license. Like at least a one time inspection to get on the radar that this is a rental property. And then, I mean, from there, then it becomes how much of a burden do you want to put on yourselves as the inspectors?
And that's what the implementation plan we'll talk about. So I almost don't even want to get into that tonight because we'll bring you back like we'll bring you back like seven different options and you and you guys can dial that regulation burden up or down. But we don't even know what we should be regulating, if anything, until we ask you guys.
So Kay, are you suggesting individual homes? Like what I'm what are?
I think so. When I lived in, when when we had a house in Whoville, we owned a property that was around the corner that we used to extend our yard and then a house, we just put a fence up and we rented the house.
Yeah.
We had to register that with the township. This is we are renting this house. We are the landlords. They came and took a one time look at it, made sure that it looked habitable at that point in time and that was it. They had, I believe, the right to do inspections in the future should they have felt it were necessary, probably on a complaint base basis. But I don't think that that ever happened again going forward. But I thought it seemed reasonable as a landlord to have to register that this is a rental house. We own this house. We're renting it out. Make sure that it's livable.
So one concern I would have is I'm thinking of like, say, faculty professors that go on sabbatical and they leave, go to Europe for, you know, three quarters of the year and they wanna rent rent out their place. Would that fall?
Well, I guess that's that depends on the definition of short term versus long term.
So so there's, I worry about individual homes and individual like mom and pops renting out their place. I just because it you the umbrella there is wide in terms of what it might capture. And and regulating, you know, trying to figure out what would be included versus excluded, you know, the short term, long term. That's that's a fairly easy fix. Um, and so so I think that that gets kind of complicated, whereas say we get our toes wet with commercial. Just focus on commercial, learn some lessons there. And then down the road, then address.
Well, my feeling is though is that solving the issues that are coming up, you know, like wherever that house is that like how do I? I think I know what you're talking about, but like how how do I fix this floor?
I got a video of Bath Police busting.
This was like a month ago.
But I don't think that just, I agree, there's an issue that needs to be addressed with commercial. I think that that is no question. But I do think that allows these other types of rental situations to sort of slip through the cracks that we are trying to catch to make sure that people have reasonable living conditions.
Well, right now.
That a landlord should be providing for them because they're paying rent.
Like when those people, like when somebody calls and they're like, my landlord, my house, we're just like, call the health department. I don't know, man.
So.
You're also, when you say that, that's still their primary residence though, right? Generally?
Presumably, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I think that puts it in a different category too, because most of these rentals aren't primary residents.
So so I mean, realistically, if you include individual homes, right? What's gonna happen is there's gonna be a whole bunch of properties on Main Streets that are rentals that are not getting looked down. There's gonna be a bunch of properties on Park Lake that's.
I don't.
At least by driving by.
Well, depending on do the like where you put that commercial number, like let's say you even put it at duplex. It's just above single family homes.
Yeah.
That would catch a lot of those on Main Street anyways.
The question I have is, do we want to capture those and creates a whole bunch of angry people to start with?
Why are they gonna be angry if if?
Why are they gonna be angry? That's what I'm saying.
Doing with the single family homes is registering now. That's it.
Registering inspection, right?
Potentially.
When when you first, when you first register, you're gonna make sure.
That's kind of the point of it though.
No, I'm on the same page. Like, yes, I want to see this happen. Where I'm trying to think about this is how big of a shit show do we want? Do we want to be successful with the commercial I I ordinance that we then later adjust down to address those individual properties?
We're all in agreement with the commercial part, so we're just kind of talking about the residential properties. And if there's issues with those, you can focus inspections on those. Right?
It is worth noting.
Issues, you go do a quick inspection and call it good.
It is worth noting, like the scenario that you're presenting though is like, that is a real possibility. I mean, our inspectors could go out, look at those properties on Main Street, but.
It's gonna condemn a bunch of properties.
Yeah, we might.
Off the bat and make a bunch of people homeless.
Well.
You don't have to condemn them.
Well, yeah.
You think they're that bad?
Well, it depends on we that's that would go into that dial of the remediate or implementation plan. Like do we give them like so many chances for remediation?
I mean, were you here for the Rosley?
But also, I think I guess the question is too, and uh one of the things that one of the impetuses for bringing this before you guys too is we Bath Township doesn't exist in a vacuum, right? So I know if anyone's been following the news about like kind of what East Lan this the takes East Lansing's been having in the rental world. But it it has made some waves. East Lansing has been uh increasing their levels of rental oversight. They've been dialing that notch way up.
Yeah.
And so what's that? The situation that it's kind of caused for the Grand Ledges, the Bath Townships, the DeWitts, uh Watertown Eagle of the world, you know, all these East Lansing adjacent places is a lot of those landlords are now selling off and then spilling over into these other communities. And so. Even this week, I mean, I'll just note, like I had a call, it was a, I wanna say. I want, from his accent, he sounded like a Russian guy and he lives allegedly in Bath Township. And allegedly his neighbor is selling his house and needs it sold like yesterday and I was like, alright, well, can I rent? His house in Bath Township and I was like, yeah. Like you can rent, he's like, okay, what paperwork do I need to fill out? I'm like, no, you don't need any paperwork and he's like. Oh, and um and he's like, well, when does the inspector come? And I was like, the inspector doesn't come and he's like, oh, he's like, alright, bye.
And I think that sort of proves Jason's point of if we're concerned. That houses when inspected are gonna be condemned, then that to me tells me that the owners of these houses. Feel that they are allowed to keep them in this poor condition. Because they know nothing is going to happen and I don't think that that's what we want to continue.
But to Jason's point, it is going to have an effect. And I just, I need, if we, if that's something that we do move forward with, like, we're gonna need everyone to be on board.
Yeah, I think we're all be on board, but it's gonna be the township board that's gonna be held accountable for it.
They need me on board.
So.
I mean, any ordinance ultimately has to go through the Board of Trustees. But I think a lot of people would like to see some properties move in a better direction. And it doesn't necessarily have to be, alright, we're kicking these people out and now you're homeless and blah blah blah, but I do think that some timeframes. Some reasonable timeframes could be implemented, because people have been paying rent on these properties for a long time. And none of that money has been going back into even maintaining it, let alone improving it.
There's also situations where people are paying a much lower rent because of the state of the property. And if we force inspections and improvements. We're gonna move against affordable housing goals, even though. The quality of the housing may not be up to our personal standards.
There's another way to look at it, is the house safe for these people to live in?
According to them, it is, right?
Not, I mean, if it is.
I mean, there's a recent situation. No, no, so, so there was a recent situation where a former board member and a former DDA chair. Got together and bought a house and along Main Street, it wasn't on Main Street, it was just off of Main Street. That got condemned and red, red taped and the family that was living there, uh, continued to live there. And it became an issue, but the place was wholly unsafe to live in.
It was leaning.
Yeah.
Visually see it was gonna fall.
And so, this was as a space where Township was doing the right thing, property owners were not doing the right thing. But the family was caught up in the middle and.
The Township's argument at that time though, just was like, we're not, we understand what we're doing to this family. And we understand they are aggrieved by, like, they're, they're not happy with us. But we also understand that we're not doing them a favor, cause if it collapses and they die.
Kills the kids, or yeah, exactly. Hundred percent agree.
And that's kind of how I, where I fall on some of this too. Is like, and I'm, I guess I'm not trying to like weigh too heavy on it, cause I want to, but I do fall on like. The planner in me is like, if, if there's black mold in a house and it's unidentified, yes, like they're getting a lower rate. But at the end of the day, like, is that really helping them or are we like, just like?
Are we just turning a blind eye?
Yeah.
Well, what if it's black mold versus living on the streets? I mean, all I'm saying is that this ball of wax is. Hugely complicated when you get to the level of individual homes, right?
Yes.
And I'm saying, do we wanna go there? Morally, yes, I do. Practically and getting stuff done, I don't know if that's the best first step, that's all I'm saying.
And I think we've heard that we wanna go commercial first, define it and then learn from that. If we take that next step down.
Table saying we should do the right thing.
What are we gonna, what are we gonna learn from commercials that's gonna help us with the single-family home?
Yeah, commercial, I think it's, I agree with that, I think they're two different, completely two different situations.
My logic against me.
Because I'm pretty cer- certain that there are probably some apartments over there where students are gonna become homeless.
Well, I'm not, I wouldn't say I'm as certain, I, if you would've asked me last year, I would've been like, oh yeah, we're gonna have a. But they have come under new management and so far we've had a better working relationship and we've seen better results, so this year's actually been a lot better.
Yeah, most of the time they're gonna fix the issues because they wanna rent that space.
Yeah, and usually.
Kick people out.
When a, when a, this is just such a private equity and like just the financialization of everything in our society issue. When these larger entities that own these apartments, when they know they're getting like a year out from a sale, they just stop all maintenance. They're just like, broken pipes, sounds good to us.
Yeah, I do, that's true.
Yeah. I don't, I personally think we need to start the process.
I mean, you could have, start off with light enforcement, you know? If that's, if you think that's necessary, you don't have to start, you know, giving hard deadlines and hard enforcement and taking them to court.
Where are we at? Cause I, I'm trying to, I feel like we're at a, a kind of even split here, well, we, obviously you. You two were more on the commercial side.
We're all on the commercial side.
Well, yeah, but you're more on the for now, short-term commercial, you're more, let's, let's do rentals. I, Ray, John, where are you guys at?
I think we need to include the rentals too, because. Can't we register the single-family homes without doing any inspection for six months or a year, whatever? We just wanna get them on the books. How soon do we have to go?
Well, we'll cover that in our implementation plan and we'll bring that back to you guys once we know what we got and then, okay, so, and we got one member missing, so he could be. That kinda sucks if we're getting tied here, John, where are you at?
Well, I've got a conflict here, because in a way, I, I also own property and rent it and um.
In Bath Township?
No, not anymore.
It's in Victor, right?
It's in Victor, yeah. But to me, if, if the renter doesn't like the property, unless they're on a lease that they can't break. They can just say, I've given you thirty days notice and they can move out. And then the next person comes along and says, I'm not paying twelve hundred or fifteen hundred dollars a month for that, have a nice day, goodbye.
Okay, so we got three and three here.
So I think that in, in my opinion, the tenant is more in the driver's seat than the landlord is. The landlord in every case has got an investment of at least several hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I hope they see it that way, I mean, the concern is they don't see it that way, they have a cash cow that they're gonna ride out until the building literally falls apart. And then they're gonna walk away.
I've known tenants, landlords that have that attitude, but that's very short-term. And it does not benefit anybody in the long-term.
But, okay, so we got three and three.
I, I, my vote, I'll vote if the consensus or if, if the weight is there that we wanna do all. Long-term rentals, I'll vote in favor of it.
Would you, how about this?
I just think.
How about this then, how about you, we work on our implementation plan. With that assumption and we'll just bring back a couple options for that dial of how crazy we get with it. And we get feedback from you guys. And if you're minimal to at least the initial implementation with the soft-touch approach, let's call it. Then maybe we can move forward there and then see how things go and you could give up, you could dial it up over time.
So one question, would Township incur any liability if it registered a rental, did not perform an inspection? And then something happened?
That is a good question, because once we are aware of the issue, right?
No, I don't think so, if, I think that's the way you write it up, is that they just have to be registered so that you can count numbers.
Yeah, we don't have to do the inspection.
Any inspection and liability, or you could run it up, you know, write it up where you have to do an inspection, license it.
Well, yeah, we'll get some, we'll, we'll check into all this and I think too, we'll build out like. If we register, then we take in the initial license, but then the license has been received and three months later. A tenant is calling us, my floor's caving in, then we do have to go do an inspection and maybe on that one, it gets tagged, but if the floor's caving in, it should, you know? Okay.
Alright, well. The other thing that was long-term versus short-term, I guess I would think a year would be.
A year's long-term, yeah.
The only thing is those big apartment complexes down on Chandler, the student ones, the leases are usually only like eight months to nine months.
Nine months.
So if you go that long-term route, then you don't capture a lot of those.
Yeah, well, those would automatically fall under that commercial umbrella though, right? Regardless of the lease length, yeah.
But we can do that.
I would think, I would think the single-family homes, it could be a year, but yeah, I agree, for student housing.
Yeah, that eight, nine-month window, probably.
Yeah, East Lansing's probably got a problem with that, because they've got some.
Yeah, East Lansing's cracking down right now and I know landlords piss.
What their ordinance is built out, so. Could we model? The commercial rentals after, like East Lansing's, I don't know if they differentiate commercial versus individual.
East Lansing is weird, I feel like if you were gonna model after somebody, it would be like Allendale or like somebody else, though, yeah.
But here's, here's what I'm thinking, is if East Lansing is cracking down and it's causing a shift of owner, rental ownerships to Bath Township.
Only in the single-family home space, so not in the apartment space, no. If anything, they're incentivizing the creation of apartments in East Lansing, that's the transit, that's how they wanna move, that's all. They're using their levers as, we, we don't, I would argue anybody should to try to incentivize outcomes they want. Okay, um, cool, alright, well, we got what we need, Chair, thank you.
So what are they gonna do, they're making votes?
Well, they're hoping that they'll be bought by families. I'm not saying they will or won't.
More kids in their school district, which has had decreasing enrollment, so.
Yeah, they're just trying to get away, they don't wanna have all their eggs in the college. Uh, student basket.
Yeah.
Yeah, they wanna be a municipality with, that happens to have a college, not a municipality because of a college.
Good point, that's a good way to put it, yeah, that's the direction they're trying.
I mean, to stop taxing MSU employees then.
In the last two years, been, with more apartments built around MSU than I can imagine they could fill. Do you know South Frandor down there?
That's funny, there's actually like a housing problem with the students, like there's not enough housing.
Really?
Yeah.
And on campus, they just pushed back and made all freshmen live on campus to maintain those. Cause they weren't vacating the campus.
Well, yeah, before it was, um, initially like before COVID, it was like only freshmen have to live on campus. And then they bumped it up, that was like, oh, freshmen and sophomores have to live on campus. Now they're like toying with the idea of like taking the sophomore piece away, so then there'll be even more sophomores that need apartments, so.
Because wasn't the reason, the rationale, they couldn't, they have enough space for freshmen and sophomores, they're requiring them to all come, but then they're turning away some of the sophomores.
Cause they needed them more, yeah, it was a mess anyways.
Okay, alright, well, Chair, we got what we need, I think, we'll bring you guys back some options.
Good, alright, I hope so, alright. Do you have any other report for Smiles that you wanna talk about?
You know, I think we, I have a big report prepared for this meeting, but we talked about kind of the implementation for the comp plan and moving forward and. It's really the main thing we're focusing on, there's been a lot of, um. A lot of meetings lately dealing with their strategic plans, so I think that's going good on the board side, um. The, all the department heads had a meeting today where we talked about implementation of strategic plan goals, um, so that was interesting. Permits have been a little bit quiet, but we've seen a recent uptick, I was saying before the meeting that I would expect. If, if this year goes like last year, we'll get kind of a fall rush as everyone comes back from their end of summer vacations and. They start getting really concerned about their projects prior to winter, um. Got a couple of different projects going on in the township, um. We've been monitoring, uh, the project in near neighborhood pretty closely, we got some complaints about drainage, so we've been out on site.
The road pretty good.
Yeah, so we were out on site after that, so was the Drainage Commission and I think he typed up a report to your H O A, so.
But yeah, the, all the utilities seem to be going into the ground right now. So, he's almost done.
We're gonna be reaching out this month to the gas station folks to check in with them, so maybe at the next meeting I can let you know what's going on there. Just cause we expected some earth to start getting moved, by this point, we haven't seen that, so now we're just kinda curious what's going on. Obviously Webster Road is wrapping up, I think it looks nice, we've heard a lot of good, uh, feedback from the community, one thing that's gonna. Probably be jarring for people and I could see people on Facebook already being like. The government is not planning this out, who in the world is in charge of all of this? Um, and it really just comes down to what it always comes down to, which is like funding and rules that are out of our control. So, one thing that may happen is the fence that is currently in place, which I agree, looks really nice right now. But it is a wooden fence and it will not look as nice in like two years. We had to put that fence in, because that's how the project was bid and approved by MDOT. We got a grant, which we still haven't received the money for, and we will in September. To replace that fence with a more aesthetically pleasing metal fence that will be good forever, that we won't have to maintain or won't degrade. Like I said, just prepare for people to be like, why?
Yeah, why'd you waste the money on wood fence?
We didn't and we will retain the wood fence, the fence was paid for with one pot of money that we received from the state. And the new fence will be paid for with a separate pot of money that didn't come from tax, local taxpayer dollars. It's just, that's why it happened that way.
Fence to West Foster Park.
We are gonna take the fence and I, if it all plays out, we will put it somewhere in the township. So, yeah, West Foster Park is something that we've talked about, so it's not going to waste, we're just, I understand the timeline is funky, I can't do anything about the timeline.
Has that property for the gas station sold?
It's sold, they own it.
They own it, okay.
They own it, that's why.
That was my only question, cause that's, that was, for, like, for norm fasteners, for example, they never had a purchase agreement and made it easy to.
It is a big indicator if this project is real or not, depending on where ownership, but you're right, yeah.
Yeah, okay, good to hear.
So cool, thanks guys, thanks for the meeting.
You're welcome.
Kate?
Um, the Board of Trustees has not met since our last meeting, we had the. Cancelled our August fourth meeting due to the election being the next day. Um, the, the bond for the school did pass, the millage passed significantly. But we did not meet as a result of the election, so I don't really have much to share.
Thank you.
Uh, I will say that, um, I did think that Bath Days went well, don't know if any of you had a chance to. Um, attend any of the events, but I thought for, um. The initial restart, I guess it's Bath Fest, not Bath Days. Uh, for the initial restart, I thought it went pretty well, I sat at the museum tent in the park. Um, all day on Saturday and we were busy all day, the museum was open and it was busy all day. It was supposed to close at four, it didn't even close till six. Um, I had to finally kick people out, which is a good problem to have, but I thought, um, I was really pleasantly surprised by the amount of people who came out, so.
Yeah, I thought it was.
I'll be curious to see their financial report and how that play, that end of it plays out, but in terms of attendance, I, I thought. It was well-attended.
Yeah, I was pleased that for as short a notice as everybody had to get it well organized.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was very well attended, don't know how many guys went. No.
Every year, election training.
I was telling John, I mean, we volunteer for the five K and, uh, we had seventy runners, so.
Seventy, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I thought that was really great.
Really good number.
Yeah. It would've been nice if there'd been more tubs for the tub race, but did they get more than two?
Three.
They had three.
I heard a lot of people on the sidelines being like, we gotta do a tub, so I'm hoping, is what Kate says, first year, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's been long enough that people probably didn't know what to expect for the tub races, but now that they've kinda seen it and have an idea. Maybe, maybe they'll put some stuff together for the future, we keep it going.
Any commissioners wanna make any comments, talk about anything?
Some comments.
Had a lot of discussion, but quiet.
So, I don't know how long ago it's been, but, I, I came here and I, I, I griped about sidewalk maintenance. And we all agreed that we should wait until we have new sidewalks and then talk about what can we do to start maintaining our sidewalks. Well, here we are, we have new sidewalks, um, and so I will, I, I do have one gripe. I, so along the Webster Road, every place there was a curb replacement, they didn't seed. And so it's all weeds, and it's not being mowed, and so, plants I've identified, I, there's velvet leaf. Lamb's quarter, crabgrass, but I'm not seeing any like perennial ryegrass or.
So I did, I do have some feedback on that point, so they did hydroseed, because it's hot and it's baking, it, it, it doesn't look green anymore. I've been, I asked about, cause I was like, dude, isn't that hydroseed like, I don't, I guess I don't understand how hydroseeding works. Because I'm like, do we need straw to keep the dirt moist? And they were like, no, hydroseed is this fancy technology where the seeds will come. When they have the ability to germinate, so.
Bad batch with just weed seeds.
Well, it just, it can't, it can't germinate right now, but I've been told in the fall, eh, the hydroseed will germinate.
Through the weeds.
That's what I've been told.
Anyhow, it looks like shit, uh, so.
I agree, but it's not like, it's just the timing sucks, like, you'll notice that the grass for the sidewalks on downtown, like, we were early enough still in the summer where. Like that was able to like take off.
I'm just saying, we have new standards now that we have new sidewalks, right? That, that was the agreement that we had.
We can't get grass to grow, we'd have to wa, I guess we could, but we'd have to have a water truck, and the road commission's just not gonna do it.
Mow the weeds, have the, have the residents mow the weeds. So, so they don't go to seed, do you know that velvet leaf, seeds remain viable for twenty years in the soil?
Wow.
How surprised.
Didn't realize that.
I mean, I can talk to the road commission, but hey, there is a lot of weeds, can you guys spray for weeds?
I don't even know what velvet leaf is.
How many long maintenance people do we have? Just go down with the weed whip, go one side and then come back the other, it'll be an hour. I'm just saying, are, do we have pride in our community, or do we not?
I mean, I absolutely do, and it drives me.
So much effort and labor into putting new sidewalks in, and beautiful new curbs.
I know that plant.
I, I agree, like, Jason, like, you're preaching, I'm like, I love what you're saying. And like, if you knew how much time I spend on my grass and my yard, and how mad my wife is about it, you'd know I agree with you.
She'd be mad at my wife?
But, yeah, but, um, I don't think you're gonna get DPW out there doing it. I think, but we'll talk to the road commission to do it, I'll see what they say, I'll be, guys, come on, like, this is, this is in the scope of work for this project, what's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, cause your crabgrass will die this winter, but you gotta treat for it in the spring though, you know?
When I, like I said, I kinda brought it up to them already, and I was like, dude, like, you put down all this hydroseed, it's not gonna grow, and they're like, it will grow, I'm like, okay.
Yes, but it can grow and have competition with all the weeds.
Well, that's very true.
This is grass one oh one.
I'll bring it up.
Grass one oh one.
I'll bring it up to them. I, I wouldn't say the, what you're saying though, like, if you get in the ear of people at the board, and they get in the ear of other people, I love that.
Yeah, you asked for our comments, that's my comment. Other than that, I, I love the fact that we have new sidewalks and improved sidewalks, I love the fact that we have, that curbs have been improved. We've done a lot of great work in our community, and so, I hope to see it move forward, I hope that we can do things to maintain it.
Well, along that line of maintenance, I really think at some point, and I don't know if the board would ever support having a sidewalk district or not.
Oh.
I think that.
Yeah, I heard you before when you said that, it would be unique, I don't know of any other area that has that, but. Yeah.
I just put in a new sidewalk up north, and I've got a corner lot in fifty-fifty split with the city.
Not necessarily a sidewalk district, Meridian Township has their non-motorist pathway system, which is supported by a village. And they plow and maintain that whole thing with township staff, but that's not, doesn't include sidewalks along residential streets, it's just their pathway system. Which does go by some residences.
Yeah, well, I'm hoping for a little stricter enforcement this winter and seeing how that goes.
Does DPW know that they have to maintain the sidewalk on that diagonal cut street?
That big one, yeah, they knew, they don't have, and we've talked to the homeowners with DPW present, being like, hey, guys, we understand this is why, this is, it had to happen this way. But we got you in the winter.
So you have something that says when they have, when the homeowners have to shovel or, or plow their sidewalks, and how much snow there has to be, and how quick do you have to get it done?
Yes.
Yep.
And the school falls under that purview, right?
They do not.
That is what I wonder, because I noticed that it is not, I figured that that probably was the reason it wasn't, is cause they were exempt, but.
Yeah, they're exempt.
But that is probably the most used section of sidewalk that needs to be cleared the most. It's bummer that it isn't.
That is something to take to the school board.
Yeah. Maybe, I don't know. Jason, write something up for me, I'll take it.
Well, I think the cost of, and the amount of enforcement that it's gonna take would outweigh the cost of having a sidewalk district. We'll see how, what happens. It's gonna be expensive, somebody go around and inspect every one of those parcels every time it snows.
You don't need, no, they could be complaint-based.
Yeah, Jason will do it for free.
Okay, alright, enough said, anybody got anything else? Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn? No?
I do too.
For your second?
Second.
Those are favors, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.